Man in the wilderness, you up? Yes, this is you up. Well, we there, man, there, blow some steam. Hey, little later, I blow some hard steam in it because it's some foolishness I drop out of the paper where definitely foolishness. But we soon go deal with that. We soon go deal with those matter. But me have a matter, yes, for dealing because, um, we just go to the great Goog, Googster, right? You see them call back? We can't make nothing miss me, you know? State of emergency. In a sentence, I mean, this is a sentence, police, right? And then you see them a crap and feel nice about the big budget. Two thing that. And next thing again now, this is some counselor. And talk about the delivery truck. And what them fit to. And take action against delivery in a Spain town. And I forgot about it, I forgot about, hey, people, let me tell you something though. Who not vote, you know, only if, only if start consider who not vote, fine. So then them all lappated kind of guy, I come in like some lappated all building. Only for run them way. Only for vote for them on a be a foolish system, brothers and sisters. I want to do. A time for nothing collectively and build the country and run with these parasites. Remember, you know, my attack again. Let me tell you now, again, I may tell you now straight. There is not a single politician can come and tell they say, we ain't loan some. And me give my money, I give my ticket. I want me done them, me give him some work or do something, not one. Well, no funny can't do that and come out come tax or burning, you know? See, we self build. So that give me freedom of speech, I would talk, I would talk and them thing there. And no dongs and no punks and them thing that can't come and point me out and say loan some car, you come to this, you mean, can't do that neither. Yeah, really, me not take talk. Me a young virgin, me a young virgin, but me not take talk, I mean, I mean, I foolishness. See? Nothing man can't do when me answer what me are saying, you know? Because I be a counteraction, them all come and take, yeah, yeah, politician, but I muted by my bike. And I muted by them first car. And I muted do this. When I can't read. See? That's why me not take talk, you know? You see me, I say, I meet us come, I say, man. Yeah, myself built man, so, you know, me not, me not, me not afraid for come talk and hold them accountable neither, you know? And point them out. And point out them foolishness. Because after this, more than Jean Pantan, you know? Because them charger, but. It's a skip aunt, but me not mind them a violent custody, but me still a watch them. Cause they may get rid of. I'm gonna show you who charge out to you, you know, but I do it for that after this. Can I remember, you know, you know, see, but you know, like, well, the one of them that went out, me let you say they can't touch the, the oligarch. Them can't. Google can have now, him can't touch him, him have forgot pack up, have him touch it. So them send out a little SSP. But you, you wanna see? For a big case like that. You have one of the way the whole side. And then, by the way, the woman where you see them say, you know, them have the proof, but what a what, can we have it front of me? But them not charge the prime minister. She put up something, say, you can't move that man, you know? On a playlist, you know, I assure you, I assure you. So them have them, them still appear them politics and still do them foolishness, but we soon hold it. Make a look on this or want to look on right now. No, we look past state of emergency, remember now, Google Gaga run out. And say. Remember January, him do it last year, him do it the year before. I went Putin. Make state of emergency, now when Putin make it, everything gone, I mean, I said, I want to the sky. Now them are running back state of emergency, watch this. Watch this. This them have run back too. Right?
The government has declared states of emergency in Clarence Saint Anne and the Kingston Western Police Division. Prime Minister Andrew Holness made the announcement in a press release a short while ago. More in this report.
In a press release on Wednesday, Prime Minister Andrew Holness said these states of emergency will be for a period of fourteen days. Police Commissioner Major General Anthony Anderson said the-
Major General Google Gaga. You can't believe, say, you have a country around now and no care of here to the gun shot. A state of emergency. Is a, is a, is a, is a police state, really, at the army, I run this now. Eh? Yeah, man. Up, up foot, yeah, no, well, big up yourself, up, man.
Kingston Western Police Division had the highest number of murders and shootings across all police divisions. With a total of seventeen murders and twelve shootings recorded from January one, twenty twenty-three to February ten, twenty twenty-three. This is an increase of thirty-one percent and twenty percent respectively when compared to the same period in twenty twenty-two.
So, oh, Google Gaga did run out in January. But by February now, look on it, look on the increase, thirty-one percent, me tell you, say, Google no good, waste of money. Yeah, tell you now, waste of money. See? You see the increase? Eh? Up there, man. Yeah, man, look, yeah.
During which thirteen murders and ten shooting incidents were recorded. The Clanton Police Division had the third highest number of murders across all police divisions. With a total of fifteen murders and four shootings over the period January one, twenty twenty-three to February twelve, twenty twenty-three. This is the highest increase among all police divisions in both murders and shootings. Murders up two hundred percent and shootings up one hundred percent.
So murders up two hundred percent, that's what in one. So here's the one I tell Google Gaga for stop run out. When him say something start low, him run out and I tell you say, I went do. Remember, I'm come on TV, come talk the same thing in the TV, you know? All the way I'm do these things, me also stop do these things, no man. You embarrass yourself. Even if you see January starts, no, February, make the year done and the year chat. And if the people them feel very relaxed and you a cause not make, you're not doing the policing, brother. Yeah, now again, just style, cause you're not police. You not have no style, you can't do police work, make police to them work. And you not have nothing about you, you not step down. You understand with that ninety-three percent? See? And the government, them a, them a, them a punk too. Cause you, you can't keep a guy with ninety-three percent. Keep on doing the same thing over, over, except, uh, ex, expect a different result. That not make no sense. You hear this, people? Now, him come out around couple of weeks ago, not tell you say, I would them put in place. Make murder done and everything, so, oh, you are defending now. Eh? Yeah, yeah.
For the comparative period in twenty twenty-two, there were five murders and two shootings. For the Saint Anne Police Division, Commissioner Anderson reported that although the division had fifty percent fewer murders in January twenty twenty-three than in January twenty twenty-two. This was reversed with a twenty-two percent increase in murders as at February eleven, twenty-
Same say, I know January have fewer murders. When it compare to last year, me say, that guy, they have, the baby, oh, they have baby, so. That's why me see with him, you know? Yes, this is, you're good. You see, no care where my say people, no care understand them thing, you know? It bad, you know? You see me, I say? Yeah, man, it bad, man. Yeah, you mean, man, it wicked, man. Care for our Google, they must say, man, look, yeah.
Twenty-three, with the year-to-date figures moving from nine to eleven murders. Mr. Holness said organized gangs are the main source and cause of violence, leading to fear and terror in some communities.
Fear and terror. You know, some communities. Say, organized gang, fear and terror. Remember, only living in the community, you know? When I live, look much years when I live there and when I look a phone a brother and a phone a friend, them and them, everything, I must say fear and terror. And me, you know, say, you know, to wet them set from long time. You know, say. Who might have some friend or what have you, but tell me one now. If them leave out of the community, who know dead? Because the next side that invade the place, so must organize gang in the community. Some people are get guard mode with, with, with who in the community. From one side, from the other side, you know? Cause depends upon who and who depend who for road. If, if the road are flat, everybody dead half. So it's like you have defender, defender, who da, who over the road there, you know, a, a launch and attack, so, I got to go on in the, in the place. Killing and counter killing, you know? You understand? You see? They must say, terror, stop use the word terror in Jamaica, man. When it's, oh, terrorism, me see I go on in a, in a bikini bottom. I open a, open a JCF and the big boys, they might, who know I give it terror against the people? Yeah. And who know, who not terrorize the people, just look on, look on the motorist, what terrorize them? You know what is terror? I want to terrorize the people, man. Yeah, man.
He added that the government must protect innocent citizens from these criminal gangs and therefore must act.
Yeah, they. So when them want to launch these things, them talk about terror, them are use the same kind of word whether using a Israel people. You, you understand the same word? And them take it to like two Jamaican same way, so them just act, although them don't, you say, be a foolish system go away. And I tell them stop it, I don't need a police, community policing. And they need contacts, me have more contacts than JCF. And me a one, me a demand of the wilderness. Everyone to move and step, me know, a matter of fact, who not no station, me know, I go out with, man. Zero in pound any time. And I joke me a make, you know, me not, me not still like them, I mean, I just come and just make some joke like me a fight, me not fight nobody. A true. See me, I say? We just keep it real. Yeah, we just keep it real, we not, we not add on and take off, you know? Wait, shoot me, believing in the wilderness, we good. You understand? We not add on and take off nothing. See? They could go on this, yeah.
Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of National Security, Dr. Horace Chang, stressed that extreme criminality, as recorded in the specified areas, requires equally strong and decisive enforcement measures to-
That a foolishness. That look on a measure, yeah. All right, people, me sure it's a foolishness. For you are go buy your business as a driver, them a ticket already and everything. And then you think say the gunman, them not a drive, look on the road where them depart. I put out barriers and I stop you and I check you. You think that have anything for doing no crime, we are going inside the area, you think them have the amount of police for, for man every road. Our crime, them can't stop if I get gunshot. So true that people are defend themselves, me I tell you that. If they, none of them can go around that. See? If you have them per main road doing this. You live off a road and them thing there, off of the main and some, some trucks and some hillside and them thing, them can't stop if I'm get shot. You understand? No. Unless them cut off the bullet, we are come out and the corruption, this and them thing, they say? You understand? But for another man have them gun and you have no license. It a, it a bring you up, say, no, me not permit the man come kill me, so. So you know, rock, a robber and thief and them thing there, but if you not get a license, you know, you are say, he, me have my family to protect. Me not follow with them, I say. So when a boy know say, him can run in by you. Eh? It's a harder thing, it save your life. But remember, you know, them doing a every truck, every, every ghetto, anybody, every, every, every ravine, anybody, no. Them depart main road. Antagonize other people. See? This not the use. Foolishness. Is a way for them thief money anyway. Why run this?
Protect law-abiding citizens. He stressed the use of the states of public emergency in these instances is a necessary and effective response-
People, you say no, also right, also? Yeah, I, I just want to fire. You say no, also that them place, yeah? Eh? You say no, Bill up, you say no, where you see, also? They have this old answer state of public emergency, what they, what this do? No, but I see what's not, wait, no. And if you block off one word, you have to, you have to depend every single road. Them have the manpower, no. They can't protect you, no. See? Then can't. Less you do police, community policing, you can't pick up people more effective and a police to them, just stop them foolishness. This a foolishness. See? You don't live, you also know, when you look at stop two, twelve police barrier, go in a country and I come back. One to who live in a, you know, who are fight and live in a, you know, in a, in a city, in a, in a certain rural, within your community, all that work. You live per a hillside, them not come there, them not drop a barrier there. Boy, you have to sleep on your hillside, now your little boudoirs. But can't he easily light or something, it make sense? What am I do a foolishness? Me not ask you. See? Watch out.
To the high level of criminal violence within the identified areas. Hal Shane Burke reporting for TVJ News.
Yeah, no.
In the meantime, the police in Saint Anne have launched an initiative to help residents resolve conflicts within the parish. Commanding Officer Senior Superintendent Dwight Powell says already, twenty twenty-three crime statistics is worrying. The details in this report.
No, under the PSOJ, them should not try and press bev. It should have ween at the diaspora. Because the PSOJ live like leeches, half our taxpayers, half our US dollars, our foreign exchange. Cause if we don't ween, you know, them not survive, you know? They are leech, you know? So let me tell you this, you know? They are import the one bag of garbage instead of create jobs, you know? And they sell it back to the people, they want our money now. When you go down there, them take it to the Western Union and, and the remittances and give them, the Jamaican work this money. Yeah, so let me money off a money what we send and then they spend it go buy a bag of foolishness. See? So let me leech off a ween. PSOJ no body without ween, you know? You understand? Yeah, man. So if we talk to them and make them know them are leeches. And them a mash up the country, them. Them, let me tell you this, the dollar, when the valley I reach, where each ever never the PSOJ. They're big and worthless. The big boys, them, them have, them have sink the country and mash up the dollar. And remember, they not pay for people, they good. All them half a more. And they fool, because you not calculate, cause here this, no. I may say, if you have. If you have. If you have a million dollar. When dollar was dollar for one. Dollar, dollar. And the money move. You understand? A week contribute and then rate us. The money move and go for one, one near one sixty to one. You million, the million dollar, if you're saving a US. You have nearly, you have one hundred and fifty, I need one sixty, one hundred and sixty million dollar, you know? But if you've changed back that you're Jamaican in a, in a the US, you know, the power of the US dollar, where you, where you trade with it. You have six thousand six hundred, six thousand five hundred, I had it. Eh? You see? So where your money gone? It not have no use. So the more them had seek something, the money the value, you hurt poor people more, it a hurt for them pocket too. So them saving a US and leave the work, the work this dollar to the people there. You understand? Yeah, man. So if you remind you have abandoned ship, the dollar there, can't have no use, can't spend away, can't do nothing. Not make no sense. Eh? That's it.
Since the start of the year, Saint Anne has record-
Um, you come off, you, you, you were saying, come off, I'm meeting a movie, look nastiness, come off, man. You're full of shit, man. Boss, stop promote, you ever give me a promote, boss, boss, lawlessness. You know, see, not a sense. You've got to tell the government to stop, stop the lawlessness. You piece of shit, you. Don't come over here neither, man. You see, a piece of shit, man. And I go for a gear name, I can a little name, I want, you are one of them, you know? He's a piece of shit. Don't come over here. You understand? And you, and you sting too, you know? You, you can't come and look on big man and go, hey, let me tell you, who not, who not fuck off and don't come round here, so, you know? You know, I tell you? Stink, you're stink, you know? Yeah? Go tell the government, stop, stop thief out the money. Stop thief two hundred billion dollar, stop fuck up the place. You two stink, man. Fucking out of order. Fucking worse than sewage. Let me turn around and put me on you. Eh? Boss, stop promote lawlessness, you fucking piece of shit and garbage. Eh? I'm fucking herself, you know? You two out of order, man, you. Let me tell you something, man, tear one a day. Hear me tell you? All right. Two pieces of zinc, man. Out of order with a piece of fucking shit self. If me go check, you know, and check out one, I fucking fuck up the place, you two. We are chat. Fucking out of order.
Did eleven murders overall. Seven of those murders were committed in Stairtown. It is for this reason, commanding officer for the parish, Senior Superintendent Dwight Powell has welcomed the curfew.
The curfew, ladies and gentlemen, is to, uh, fix the issues that-
It not fixing no issues. It not fixing no issues. Brother, all you need to do, me not know how much time people are telling, just to go country run. We live in a country, look here. We not need, you think, they are gonna say, police, come, come call me, you think I have to go, you know? You think so? Police never drive on your road. You didn't see them? Them the boat, you didn't see them? You leave your place and valuables there, who are coming to your place? People have for them place and drop them garage, them have valuables in there same way. You leave a key in your truck and nobody in a movie. People leave them, you can contest it, why? Because everybody has survived. Eh? You see me, I say? And the wilderness, not even Beverly's look like, in the wilderness. Not even that. You see me, I say? So when I talk, this are just foolishness. Them are foolishness, this is not policing. Them want do a control kind of little thing, these police, I must say, it will stop. Them have to stop a foolishness. It need to stop. You understand? For them kind of approach, it does a wrong approach, it don't make no sense. Community policing make better sense. You understand? They not get intelligence on them thing there, you know? Real intelligence, we not talking about us foolishness. You understand? We not talk that. We are talk real things. Them to stop this, this not a work, this a waste of money. This a crap. And you have a little nasty piece of crap, they went, we just flush the coil. You have thing like that, no, that's why the country not running up. Them can't tell me about a country, you know? Yeah? Which part me have a drive now, police have stopped me every minute and I do all kind of little things. Why? For what? You not break laws, why? Eh? Me never drive and say, police have stopped, nobody want to stop you far. You break the law, you go through the light and you know, it's a boom boom, them, it flash you. And you get something, now you're here, you go pay it. You go deal with it. See? If you have accident, uh, who for come an ambulance and police, you live your life. See? You want that kind of society? You don't want a society, a police society. You understand? A militarized society. This is a Middle East. You understand? The rich boy against the poor one, them, and the lead chiefs, PSOJ, we are lead chiefs, we are lead palm, our money. And you have little piece of crap like that come and run off it mouth, man, go ahead, man. Don't give me no chat run, you man, me not tell you say, we are running a friend. Eh? You see me, I say? Get them out of order, man. This don't make no sense, man. Same way, man. Same way, the whole of them are sin. And when you go check the one of them CV now, be a dirt upon them, you know? And blood, and blood on them, you know? And them are run a country. Oh, you forget respect, me not respect no criminal boy, yeah, man. See? We not respect criminal boy, the real criminal, them are the politician, them are run the country. And I'm, I'm matter of fact, and me alone, no, go look on WikiLeaks cable, go look on some other thing. Oh, oh, them get up and, and vote for these kind of crap. Oh. Eh? Oh. Yeah, that one, you know, yeah, that one, yeah.
Is happening in Stairtown. Now, of course, we have been violence, we have seen a few murders since the start of the year in Stairtown. We have seen some shooting incidents. And I'm gonna say to the criminal element over in Stairtown, that as long as I am the commanding officer of the center, you will not be allowed.
Yeah, you look, I'm bigger fool now. Me never make him finish that. As long as I am the commanding officer in Stairtown, you will not be allowed for do it, but you say them are shoot. So when the man, I shoot, if them a kill and I shoot, or you mean them not be allowed? When them are do it? Eh? Man does pick a word and talk the right thing, man. Eh? Them to talk the right thing, man, what can, what can somebody this a talk, man? Yeah, yeah.
To have, your field day, we'll find you, we'll fix the problem, we will address the problem.
So, oh, you know, instead of chat on a mic. You don't need it, you don't find him long time. The problem you don't fix, you don't address it. A matter of fact, when I find everybody and address the problem already. Who not chat, I got be a garbage them chat. Community policing, a man have a sleep. Him have a sleep. No care what you do, you have a cross, but you are a leader, shut down, you catch it with a line, stick it up for short. So if you don't work with the rights, that people, them are work with the people, instead of bully them and take everybody for criminal in a ghetto. You're that, you're that good. You understand? But no one, I mean, I tell you straight up, there is no man. See? I will call you, ask some man, eh, remember, me know about real ghetto, me a real ghetto, you know? See? So the man not go see no police, I call them for them own demise. In otherwise, and I like, ooh, remember, you know? And I like, when them call the police, per who them know? And the police get them out. Somebody is in there, I'm gonna mash them up, no. And the one, they might take them for enemy, where the man, them a walk on the other street, I'll come and burn you out and mash you up. Eh? Look on West Kingston, they might call Deadman Mackenzie, I say, hey, we not vote prime minister coming up because over, over the department, over the name. Eh? Because them someone I envy them, doubt it. Look on other places, everyone have the same thing when I say. Eh? You understand? Them not know the reality of the thing. Them don't know the reality of this. See? All them do, the big boys, them stand there and, and thief up and do what they want to. You, you, you see me, I say? You understand? You understand? So this a work, this a work, I know. As I said before, he is a piece of shit. Cause you are you are work, let me just flush you right away. And, and don't use my language, because he is a, he is a jail piece of shit, you know? You don't, you don't just put up there, say, yeah, yeah, he's a jail piece of shit. He's not a mold piece. Yeah, he's a piece of shit. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mash up the country. And you, we have people like me, I hold on accountable. Remember, you know, the two grand, we are getting up. Now, it not help, cause you are mash up too much people. You are Andrew. Yeah? You understand? Yeah, you see the tissue where they might give you for cook, I, I eat your use in your path. Girl, make you stop, get some heat, yeah? Yeah, man, he's a piece of shit. Yeah, man. See? Yeah, man. Yeah, man, it's a next piece of shit, I have a flush, same way. So hear this.
So whether it takes a curfew or other intervention measures, we find you-
Other intervention measure, I follow where Andrew do. Andrew, where you say sleep with window and door, you know, for sleep with the window and door, you know? You can't have, you can't have it both ways, you know, sir. You can't have it both ways, you know? You can't say you alone now for do this and baby, dream and do all kind of little things and then you come with this, you know? You see me, I say? Eh? You can't say, see there, them have curfew, but me just see somebody shot and killing a parameter work in a sentence. You see me, I say? See there? Me I tell them a be a foolish system attack. Eh? Them a chat, be a foolishness, this a garbage. Them, it not go nowhere. Ops, you are police, them are gonna where? Where, yeah, them a chat, it are gonna where? Eh? It not gonna where, not true? Yeah, yeah. Remember, I say, Andrew the liar, this thing, by the way, you know? Only two look up, he's a garbage. Are the worst thing Jamaica ever seen, you know? I be a killing one, them chat foolishness when them done. Now, we hurt now go, say, everything that work, look here. Or if you use something, think out of the box. You could have used the same method from two thousand seventeen. And now a twenty twenty-three, and you continue to use it. Who you can convince? Say this a work or something, who you convince? Look on the murder rate last, last year. Eh? Look on the murder rate last year, who them can convince? Them is doing garbage. And when you point out garbage, you have them two little piece of shit, you know, say, them get paid, you know? And when you point out garbage, you have them two little piece of shit, cause you know say, them get paid you know? Them get paid, but you know, like a man like we, we not, we not, we not, we not run with them. We not a get flush. I will run away, I foresee when in a real life, when I still I get flushed same way, so we not even business. See? Yeah man. Cause one a mash up the place. Yeah? One a help. So one will stand up there and back the foolishness. One for charge for treason to man. One evil to man.
We'll get the problem fixed.
SSB Powell also said that there are some men on the police's most wanted list from the area. He's urging them to come forward.
So Mr. Kemar Matthews from City Town. That was it.
So, a man come from City Town. Boy you have, you have call him over TV or something. And tell him come in with liar. If you have real link, no you don't know where the man asleep on, spot him there, City Town, and pick him up. You don't know what time him go rest, you know what time him bleach and all kind of thing, a lie me a tell. Action the real police. Eh? You think him will have action for come here? Eh? And name him a calling, because he just, he run name and just feel like for call it you know? But yes, the commission must not call no name until something table. You must say call no name. In the house. Who you are, who you are, who you are investigator, that them do you know? So if you protect politician. Boy you can't call the youth them name like this. Hear this.
OC Bitter. OC.
And them big man, um, well me a big man said speed, but them man are like seventy odd man, eighty odd man now you know man. Go come here sir man, the woman them man eh not the food, man I can't name fifty you know? Nothing I go say you know? Them man I can't believe when you are sixty, so the man a, the man eh not less than ninety five, we eh doing on the phone same way. The one eh come stand upside of the police yeah. A man I can't fifty had none at all. We eh doing on the phone same way. Eh? Something wrong man? Look at the man look old man? Look at.
BB, we have interest in you sir. So come with your lawyer. And so that we can work out the situation for you. The sooner, the better. And so I'm gonna give you a timeline, I'm giving you Mr. Kemar Matthews a timeline. We want you to come.
We have intel on this, on the right criminal them. Not true? Yeah yeah.
Before six o'clock Wednesday evening. So Mr. Kemar Matthews, OC Bitter, OC BB from City Town. Find yourself to the nearest police station.
Hard, hard life for them sir. You know say all? You know say all? You know say all? So, uh, so, uh, you know man, them have to do something better than this then fee man. Eh? Them have to do something better, Indian Thunder Bailey man. Him have to do something better fee man.
In center, or either way in Jamaica.
He says persons need to find amicable ways to resolve conflicts in the parish. It's why the police recently launched an initiative to assist in.
No matter we reach sixty, if I come out of force man. The one I can't have force man. Ah him a, 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 a fit, which one of them older? Eh? Yes, I'm a good cop. Alright, but which one of them older? And him a, which one of them older? Man I look older than sixty man. But you say hard life, life can't stop on him man. Eh? Alright, you see, you see a man like you now, eh can't talk to me and say, oh a good cop. Yeah, we, we do some boom boom and run him thing and know from, you know them where they, so we, so we deal with the thing man. Yeah man.
Disregard.
So one third of our deaths last year in center was again from conflict situation, domestic violence situation.
Alright, she, she might tell you that, she might, him a come to my thing that domestic violence, one third of the death. One third. So him come back to where me a tell them say. Hmm? If you know the community policing, it could have saved them life there. Because tell me what, it's when somebody in a conflict, them respect you, right? And instead of them come and say, yeah. Instead of them come and say, um, me I can do this and do that, you know what I do? They might have called you the police and say, listen, that, that me have a little problem with me nephew, I me have a little problem with my uncle, I me have a little problem with that, I me neighbor. And then when you look, him a call fi, one of fi police bedroom, and in space and time, it's solve. Community policing, the man them not hear, that every handed thing eh not work. It does not working. You can not do something, too much decade, and you still I do it, and we are saying, and so police just to work. You see? Eh? You know about me, I tell them long time. Yeah, but you can, if you say one third, alright. So you have the thing where me ask you right, and you say, one third of the people them were dead in the place. And, and this, you, 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 where me say, well. So if you're a police, a friend and one, because the least you could think you know? I remember I walk through the truck and I walk to and chat to everybody you know? So you know what I run in your head? You have seminar, dismal, where you book feel like, because them call it ignorant. Yeah? Ignorancy. So you feel mad, you say alright, you know say, me I call Thunder. And me I call, what is that one name, Powell? Me I call Powell. See? Me a tell you this, so when you call them now, me say, listen alright. Me I send a team, boom boom, what, what's the problem? And him a call all a man on them phone, camera have the number, I say, what's the problem, no come here man. Or me I come there. And them talk and say, oh no, 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 for keep the peace, no for do better than this. You think them are about the peace? What them a fight over, the crocodile game? What them a fight over? A hundred dollar, a thousand dollar? Sometimes them thing them make people lose them life, or them disagree, or some disagreement. Eh? See? But when you not have that relationship, then you want to take it out on themselves, them a say, yo, me not get no justification. And all kind of things, and it, and it spiral out of control, and that's it. Always a police, community policing, and the, and the greatest thing that. Greatest thing. You understand? You gotta, if you do that, you get a more information. You know everything we are wanting in the community, say you can't put finger upon it. You know who do this, you know who finger Smith. You know, you understand, you know Lac Smith. You know, you, you, you know the, the press them. You know who smoke weed, you know who sell liquor ganja, you know, you know everything, you can't put your finger upon it. You understand? But the people have to trust you. That them know, you, you see me I say, and, and not joke, it's serious. And then you know, you know, you know, come look on the little things them. You know, look on the little baby things them, because when you look on the little baby things, them eh not go nowhere. You know, for deal with that, to get bigger things. And believe me, you get the place quiet down and enough respect, alright. So alright, so alright, now come play something, them say, before police moved done out a place and sprint, and sprint up, the place used to run better. I don't, me not believe in the damn thing neither. Enough man not believe in that, you know why? Them a say, the place keep because no rape, no this and that. See? It in a fit, but me not, we not add a damn thing, because you have something, but them violate and kill people and bury and things, so me not add a thing there. If you have police, policing. See? But it look, it make, them people they make the police look stupid then, because them not hear you. And them can't do some woman say, them just get out a road, and then the road, and the man them more respect with the world we are going, because them people eh in a the area at all times. So a man knows, say okay, them serious, you know, if you, if you rape, you know, this is happening, you know? Just the fear of it. Yeah? And then you know some man, them have some footsoot to make two look a patrol and raise with you. Eh? You, you see me I say? It, it, it keep up. And then you look like them done there work, although them do so much evil thing, pan the, pan the other side you know? Cause them have to cut for people, they could data, and you can't say nothing, and them do this and do that. So you know want that, you need real policing. You will, you, you need a real state, so you know back the foolishness. Eh? You know back the foolishness then, and I like, some people believe in it you know? Because them say, okay, it keep my place more safer. But that a foolishness same way. See? Yeah, this is what the police should all do. Keep the place safe. You know, go through, you are walk through, no walk with no rifle, no fight nobody. And every man run, you run half five neither. You understand? Yeah, yeah, you see me I say, so what you do, you are, you are do, police, community policing. You sit down with the old people them, you, you keep a little treat there. Let me tell you this. People say I anger old people, so I anger the youth them sir. You have a hear things. What's time me telling, not a joke me I make? And a joke you know? Eh? You, you see me I say? Police vehicle equipment, no but we are, we are bad for them, forget them vehicle and all kind of things. You see me I say, if them just do that, them good you know? Them good. Them good. So we are tell them a waste of money. And by the way, you police, you know, say we not come from we same way. See, can, me not know which, what a way in a the place, where we not have no family, but come go do policing. I very few, but if, if your father was not police, or your brother, your nephew, or your niece, or somebody, but somebody are, are sort of too. See? So you, you, you have some team that come from, come from a party, you might have never turn it. You see me I say? You understand, but you have people who serve it, but tell me what now? So what I'm to the kids, them have some police to serve already and dead and gone. You just see the man, truly never know about them father, nobody, you just treat them bad same and everything. But you don't go, them, for them father never treat yourself. You a little boy, maybe you never born it, them never treat your father so. And you a people so. Eh? You, you see me I say? Yeah man. So we just a tell them the truth, I say, yo, just do the real thing. Yeah man, me know say him man, me know say him, me know say him man, that's why me say, if him a fit, which one of them older? Which one of them bigger, me know say him man. See, me know say him, ah bedroom. See? You understand? That's why me say it you know? But we are say, just do the right thing. Do the right thing. Stop do them thing you have to about come in and this and that, do. Um, community policing. People will help you. Say if you say one third a dead, and what a dead, half of some little simple things. Yeah? If a man, if you attack to people like that, and them know say, you honest and you fearing of yourself. And let me tell you something, and, and you make the whole community, you visible to the community. Believe me, it cut on a lot of things. See like, where some done in the area, if anything, them run down to the dock. And you know, you know, you know, you know say, okay, but it worked that way, that mean a true. It a work that way, that of course. But we not want not done, because our done do script for them and them family and the two little man round them. For them pick they go good school, and they make friend fight, friend a friend beat, friend and kill friend. Friend killers them. See? Can them say you slip and them kill you? See? We not want that. You want policing, you want good state. You don't want a criminal state, a state within a state. You not promoting that. Remember you know, yet like them two little garbage, just a chat you know? Them a run down the same, because not the politics, you still, them a member parliament, where you look, and them a the done. And them a run some, them a run some, them a run the constituency you know? And you still, the freedom and bloody, you, you know, see lawyer, doctors, judges and all kind of thing ah come out there you know? No, I be a gunman. That make sense? Eh? You see me I say? That not make no sense. So me can reason, whoa, whoa, whoa dad man, I'm great, I'm great, I'm, 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 I'm super, super, super than granddad man, but good man. You see me I say? Now we are tell them say, not make no sense. Just create something, make sure the kids them alright, who no police, who not going to, no, no, carry no gun, no fighting them. Walk the road, go look for every, number one. Who not get a information, but you not stop at every house. So you not gonna know who, who living there, the old people them, who live there so, and no curfew you are dropping you know? The youth them not run know, cause them see you, believe me, them a more want behave themselves, cause them know you call them name. Me not ask you. See? So me a reason with them again. See, me there a reason with them again, for a serious thing. You, you see me I say? Yeah man. Me there, for a serious thing. You know? You see me I say? Yeah man. You see me I say? You understand? So this, this, this are just some straight up thing. Yeah? But them people you know, that like them two little one, the way you just flush, so them like play that little thing there. And then now that's, we are Jamaican you know, let me tell you something again. Where you for understand the connas, two connas tennis. No politician in a Jamaica, none of them history can come and say them gee, we unload some one cent. You remember when cent used to use? Said they give me one cent, and then give me a golly work. And then give me a, 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 a farmer ticket. And them do something for me. None. Eh, none. When me say zero, and remember it hard for you say that. Hard for you say that. Look up a man like me, sit down, I said no, I talk to no. Me not like talk to a big spliff, don't. Like me I talk to H T, she had that a day, and she said, me say, sit down two, two, I said, I drink water. Me drink a lot of water still, but me not go drink none pan, pan thing, but me not drink liquor. You don't see me I drink no liquor, doubt it. Eh? My music hit me and feel no pain, my good. Yeah, I mean, I win up for the person, you know? At twenty-five years, my man already see you in the youth, you know? Listen, we a big man you know, we not chat to, we not chat to little punks and freaks. Go know on yourself. And, and we now, we now come on, I said us, adjust on yourself good, and properly. Twenty-five years, this, we are quarter century that. Some people not started. You know, quarter century, wedding anniversary, quarter century. Me and my man J are going good. I'm, I'm dealing with family morass by the way. See? So when me a talk, me, me say me a the man of the will on this, but watch me. What me doing and I do? See? Who the food we are not eat, we not eat it. See? Yeah man. You see me I say? So everything now, you see what we are teaching them these kind of things, politician not catch we, I catching our head. You not phone a head, only get trick all the time. But we want clear up the place, because tell me what now? The whole of them people, where you see call me and them old people, what me do for the, what me do for the control, not do it neither, me not ask. Who not look something from politician, so when them do them thief taxpayers money, who not lick a bit of thing? And then on a yap off on them out, they sell out. Yeah man, on a sell out man. Never get real. See? Alright, let me, let me leave on this, so I make memoir show on this now, look back, look out, look out, people have vote for them politician yeah. And look, just listen where them council they say. Just this way I say, and tell me if this make sense, listen here.
An urgent appeal this afternoon for the Saint Catherine Municipal Corporation and the police to get things in order in Spanish Town. The matter was raised at the latest sitting of the Saint Catherine Municipal Corporation monthly meeting. More in this report.
Councilors and the motoring public in Spanish Town, Saint Catherine, are fuming as delivery trucks continue to overtake the already cramped space in Spanish Town.
You, you, you hear this people? They live with truck, me say best dress truck, and me say beer truck and them thing, the right? So the councillor for Spanish Town, fuming. Me I show you something, me, 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 me I show you, oh them not make sense. We really know. Just, just watch this, watch this.
It has led to renewed calls from at least one councillor for the issue to be addressed. Councillor for the Ginger Ridge Division and Deputy Mayor Ralston Wilson says something must be done immediately about the practice.
So, you have done something about the practice you know? Delivery truck, this you know? See? People vote for, a man that for go go sit on a rocking chair and go rock it. Right? Him a for go, yeah man. Eh? Him a for go sit on a rocking chair you know? Just this way I say, me I show you something.
Legacies attitude where trucks come in as they feel, deliver as they feel, block the road where they feel causing name, and even sometimes some of the citizens of this parish, because they have something to offer them, want to beat off motorists.
So you see where I do now? You have, you have a town, it's a village. We have a bypass, just one of the back road there, so go, go choose Spanish Town bypass, if you not have, come through the town, eh you not buy something. But you have all these buildings, so what I do is, lift down some building and widen up the road there. Because you can't, say you can have old steel and building, and, 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 and then, and then you don't have delivery. Because, remember you know, you have to have delivery truck, like everywhere where you live. If you have the delivery, you can run out of goods, and if you run out of goods, what happened there so? All them make money. All them clean the parish, all them run the parish. See? So Spanish Town is a little thing, so you have, you have bypass, you have couple road, if you not have to come through there so? You not come through there so, you know, nothing to buy there so, you go round. And you cut out, and you have more than one road, and them, them that set up a way, the right? But you can't have business, where you get license for run. And then I tell you say, you come in and deliver as you like, so me run out of goods now. And me want a truck a best dressed chicken. And them a want some D and G, what pay them, what pay the money, remember the, the country for run you know? Cause the budget where you, you know, if you have, you actually underline, you know, remember, you know, money have to come for go pay these things, you know? Okay, by the way, you a park your truck, and the truck man have your pay extortion, so protect your, if you try protecting, can we get wrong? And you have a councillor, so, I say you come in and deliver as you feel. It make sense? It matter about the motorists, so me I drive, me not live there, me I drive, I may go a country, me not want pay the, the tool, I mean, we could not take the bypass, me just feel like to drive to the town. You must say you are blocking me, but if not realize, if you stop, the delivery because the amount of goods are move. You are gonna make them sharp, that what people are do, carry arm out, wheel out, turn on park, and then push it, and we bar come deliver it to the, to the shop then, or you are gonna draw them out. You not see, you not supposed to see on the council now, them man, oh, you vote for them man yeah? Oh, you vote for them man, when I have not, if you not think out of the box, this, and them, I'm, I got a my shop Jamaica, you know? This my shop Jamaica, you know, because when one three TV and chat it, no make no sense. No, no, apps, this make sense to you? If you have all the business place, where there's a close place and what have you, and then, remember, remember, you know? Them not come and deliver to you unless you want it. Let's say good a move, but what, what, what the business there, right on the road, the road never so bad, so you have one side, you see me I say? Eh, I hear him now, the practice, you come in and you deliver as you like. And the deliver as you like, I, I when me adder, so that me ya try a lot on the, the, the very store. Where imply, how much people them, them imply. The, the, one of them business store, they imply people, you know? Look, hear, hear me, li- listen him again, listen here, listen here, and then why you give a truck them ticket? So if them stop deliver, all the people them get them goods. He might if deliver maybe one time a month, he might, he might tell you, oh, ah, how much money, how much, how much delivery? If I make from the place, right? Let me just go back to him yeah. Eh, so man, them man are fooling a man. Listen when, listen where the man I say, I say again, listen.
To renewed calls from at least one councillor for the issue to be addressed. Councillor for the Ginger Ridge Division and Deputy Mayor Ralston Wilson says something must be done im-
There's a Guinness truck, this, you know, a D and G, a Guinness that, right? And you see the truck them, where them, them they power one in a one lane, them are deliver, okay? Here where I say now, listen here.
Immediately about the practice.
This legacies attitude where-
Legacies, you might like calling legacies, oh, them vote for these people better? Oh! Them, them same one, I fit, remember, you know, it, it imply people. Then you, you live in the place, like Ensome City, where the place have to buy things, unless you come a town. Unless you, you, you know, but I rent them, ah, 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 wanna buy it back, and lick down some of the thing, then the whole town and widen back, the, 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 the city. When I forget them license, them have to pay their money or whatever it have run, eh, and then you want stop that, eh? That make sense? You see me I say? This make sense? No, no, only tell me if this make sense, where I sell the car right? This, and I call it this legacies approach, through the way, deliver as you like, yeah yeah, and the truck him has, him, him, yeah yeah.
Trucks come in as they feel, deliver as they feel, block the road where they feel.
No block, no, you, 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 you hear what I'm say? You come in and deliver as you feel, so him, him not thinking, my shop in a Spanish Town square. Who know me have to pay my taxes with, me have a license, me have to do everything. It was a village, it not bad, we have, we have a road, if you pass, you can use a back road, or the highway, and then we have some other road where you can't turn off. So if you come down, deliver, if me want five day water delivery, because I know one thing myself, now I said all kind of things, plus me I employ people. Plus me have to pay my money to them, you guys said the truck them, and I blame the truck, and you want to charge the truck them now, eh? Then what, 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 what happen here so, eh? Eh, hear this, and him I said block road, and he not block, they put one side, you know, so that mean it a run dry. So if you follow them, them not have no future aim for your country, oh, people vote for these, these brainless piece of, me never know if I call them. Eh? You don't even know what I call them, because them have, them have, this a waste of meat. Who not watch me now, this a waste of meat, eh, people make sure not vote back for this, you know? This is going, going and rocking chair, you know, them may not have no future thinking or nothing at all, you know? Eh, this a what wrong with Jamaica? You see me I say, yeah? You, you see me I said, this, how we wrong with Jamaica, you know? Eh? This make sense, people everything out of the box, so me could have, if me, alright, so me could not be a councillor, I'm gonna listen all to this, me also bought me some man, but you just sell the car right, and the truck now, you want to get ticket on them thing, but who are the deliver the goods? You are push it on wee bar, I come, you can't deliver the goods, who are give them people a work? Overrun, overrun a municipal without these things, oh, whatever I do, we have to make sure the truck them come deliver. And by the way, if you park the truck ten miles away, oh, them get them things, it a park front of them place. Missed two year vehicles still a park there. Who not know sense so? You can't believe this? Eh? Yeah, yeah.
Causing meme, and even sometimes some of the citizens of this parish because they have something to offer them, want to beat off motorists.
Yeah, where I said motorists, want to beat off motorists, and the truck this now, are the people them life line this now, you know? Them food and everything, you know, now, they have a bill, like, oh, you know, modern day city bill, it bills, you know, like village, right? So if you, you park from one, and you see two set of vehicles still a pass, we have some other road there, cause, remember, me used to there Ensome, so me know the place. Yeah, and we have the back park, that's how we can drive and go on, same way, see? You understand, and it a go, go over the time, because them have, them have build more scheme in a the place, before El Tam, before El Tam bill and the whole of them place to bill, you remember about scheme piece, I have Ensome City, and then you have, you see? So, so them build more, then go build Angel, then go build this, then go build more scheme, you understand? But you still can't pass on the party, but the man are not a boat in there so, them want to beat motorists, don't make no sense. You understand, so if you do it, where you are do, you are drop the money, we not collect, we not make people lose them job, or the place have a lot, then I do something, we not have to do then. We not reduce a boom, and buy out some of the building, them and lick them down and broaden the road, simple. Eh, and I said no, because historical building, we not go do it. So why complain? So you are fine, if you not buy something in the center, drive around this and cut through, and, and you go back round, or drive around that road, and do something about, about, about that. I stop build up more schemes in a the place, certainly make no sense, eh? But hear this.
Who want to go about their business in a very peaceful way.
Yeah, him had, and the motor, him had talk about the car, I drive two, want to go about them business. Not the business place where I give some money, you know? So me could have come, me not come from town, and me just I drive two times, I say, me want go to my business in a peaceful way. So if you shut down this, or you can't make them deliver every day, so if your business run out a, a item, and you have workers, it will just run out and that's it. Eh? Let me, the, the total plan them, them run together, let them run in a brother, cause what him I talk, I say no make no sense. Eh, yeah, them are think about, unless than thirty years, them not think about brother, not a hundred years. And I like how Brooklyn Bridge, look how old Brooklyn, Brooklyn Bridges, and it's still a used to the day. See, so them build villages, you never broaden it up, so what you do, you not get up and broaden up something, now say, here what now? Historical, but I've got to take off some of them building, yeah? Yeah, alright, so on the part where the police station, they, remember the old police station, where they say, what a day, you know? I eat before the one they come there, so what we use, use the one they say, you know, do wanna build out a brick. It not use again, that could a liquid, you also know, old buildings, so who want keep it, no, it stand up the way, because no widen up the thing, take it out. See, and take out some of them building, they will go on the left hand, because even before the plaza they build. The plaza, the way you can't drive and go on there, a back road, they saw, um, thing the road, same before the plaza they build, where you call the high low plaza. Alright, this, so, the police station, the, 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 um, the, the hospital, over the, and you could have get piece of land from that side there and widen it, you know? See, because remember before, that station they open, you know, the old one we used to use, you know? That time Spanish Town no bad none at all, you know, you walk through Spanish Town, you know? You walk to any time, you know, you know gunshot, and no, Ensome City sweet them time there, tell me, I tell you, you know? So we know Spanish Town before it stays so, they had to deliver Enso, we live at Kennedy Drive too. Remember me do everywhere, you know, me tell them already, you know, see, remember me had to run another system too, you know? See, alright, so it used to nice like that. But, you know, and then you have a cane piece, you can go broke cane, I do, you go cane there, boom bam bam, you know? See, so the place used to nice. You understand the library, I run on everything, and you have the old station where I use, and you have the back of this, and the whole place, see? Look nice and thing, less traffic, less thing and them thing there, we all grow it, we know? But you can't go say delivery truck, where you not think, say, okay, this place are employ a lot of people. Them have to sell them goods, and on the way, number one, there is, there, there cannot be a delivery truck. If you have goods already, and you don't want no more, that me ya move goods. Plus G C T, so them I make money, government I make money too. Eh, so if you have these guys, just say them a councillor, and them don't have, them a go chuck, want, want to go about them normal business. Just to go in a this contact, man, who vote for this guy? Eh? Eh, who vote for them guy, yeah? This make sense? Our country grow. Eh? So you also make a widen out a party, the plan of them not have no plan, then not, them just come up with that next thing, but them want know, you know? Police, you go clamp the truck them, so if the truck them not come in now. You try, I, I the same thing with the taxi them too, you know? Because in a, in a them place, you can call a Uber. Uber now, if you have on the red plate, and not, not have nothing, you can, you can be a Uber driver. You can sign up on them, on them, who are a pass, the government not run them down, government to get them tax and everything. They want make sure, make sure you pass or something like what them say, so you can go be a Uber driver. See? Be a part time, me book people where, me just run good a man, down, down at the doctor's, I may have come up back, I mean, I want, try, I remember, you know, make no difference, give it, you are part there, you might appear some more money, cause you know you have to pay for parking. See, and you call a Uber, depends on what you are gonna spend on, and you call a Uber for that strap you up. And when you look, it's a doctor driving from maybe Pakistan or something, and them I drive Uber. Them live in a place, I drive Uber, serious, doctor for them control and all kind of things. See, so nobody not look down on nothing at all, you are talking about real life now. And I like, you know, in a, in a, in a Jamaica, like the other day, me I tell my bedroom, say, even the mechanic them now, um, we have to upgrade them because the car them are carry chip now and any little things, car, them car, car them coming like plane sensitive now, you know? Yeah, yeah, them have chip on the all kind of little thing, and I like the carburetor car them and them thing there. So even the mechanic them were used to have the, the arm thing, them that have just fade out. Them have figured up on them thing now, and upgrade them and all kind of things, me don't think Jamaica do that neither. But them are carrying more and more car, more and more vehicle, so you have a little time now, them there, you know? You are want some of them kind of people, you know, where, understand that, and they not train up that neither. So we are tell them, oh, you match, oh, you match for, you know, the twenty-first century, oh, you match, you know, workforce when we still have, we just hang on and not go back where, and you have, you have some think come on a think out of the box, and them want go think one way. Eh? Oh, you match it, oh, it match, so we have to do show like this, where we talk to them, I say, but, won't ask the bedroom, you know, make no sense. Only just in this, and only just oppose some things, and just rush some people where, only there, no one I say. Because this store, they imply a lot of people on there. It doing a lot of revenues for run the municipality, it do a lot of these things. And if you see, if you see the delivery truck come, that mean me run out of goods, and if me not have no goods, I better me close down. And if you are tell me say, hey, who not care and get no goods, you have to come in one, one time or one truck. Well, a Guinness truck, I carry what, bread, and carry bun, no, but no much bread and bun truck, I carry that. Or a Guinness truck, or a bun truck, I carry rice and flour. Eh? The most different, different thing, flour meal truck, I, I, I carry that, who me order from man. Eh? You see the man, they not have no sense, man? Eh? They not have no sense, you can't vote for these, and, and them are hold back Jamaica, you know? People with small mind. Them not think out of the box, them just think one way, and you know where more them for the, clamp the same delivery truck, will make the place move. Think I do, listen this, and ticket them, yeah yeah, listen.
This need to be stopped.
He said-
I'm said for stop. If we get fire, people, how you for vote for this? Eh? How you vote for this? These are the things where me have to about people who open them, I'm said for stop. You can't come deliver where you want deliver, if you stop. This is a councillor, man, yeah, you know?
Saying that a day or time be provided, as the roads in the old capital cannot manage the five days of delivery.
It can't manage five day delivery, remember, you know, you have too much business, then where you have a mass on some of the business. So I say you have to think about a day. Oh, one day a delivery, I have, I have suit me, when me I send different, different brand, when different, different truck I come. But in my store alone, big store, it could come with everybody's store. You not see the man, they not make no sense, he might make the capital lose a lot of money. So if the people them lock up them business, I come out, I better him come out, you know, go on, you know? Can the people them out a job, you know? But them I give my job, and you see what I do, destroy, them I destroy Jamaica. Them I destroy Jamaica more than anything else, because them not, them not have the thinking capacity, nothing, not enough for them brain, them ya crap too. Eh? Every council driver S U V, you hear that people? And their money can't give them that, you know? Eh? You, you see me I talk about, what them ya do here so? Eh? Then, hey, you ever drive, you ever drive in my place, I see the amount of trailer per road. I mount up, everything have to deliver, you know? And you ever go in a them place, and go in a them store, and you see them empty yet? In a day, the, remember them have a deal about much time, right through the day. Because people are buy, but nothing must run out, let me just tell you now. See, but they make plans, them have parking lot, them have all kind of little things, so you go there, you park, I remember hundreds of vehicle come park to. Hundreds, so by you come out, too much more come in. But so you make plan, and then, it not, all them thing they make plan, where you live, you have school, you have everything there, so you live a poor more on the turn of dormitory. Where you just sleep, them not have no plan, them not have no style. If you have built in a city, it's supposed to be in a city, you not supposed to stay so. You see me I say, if them man alone, and enough of them, enough more of them in a the municipality, them mash up the country. Just because, remember, them not thinking, they want go think, they, they truck if we have one day, plan a day for them, and them agree, all of them agree, let me, let me listen here.
Streets of Spanish Town was not built for this sort of development or population.
So why, who to make, it a build more houses? So if it not built for that, what I do, shut down the store, the many people them go a toll goodbye? A man in a, in a, in them have sense? You see it, we have some dumb, dumb man, dumb man, hey, them, that's why Jamaica not move. Eh? This is why the country not moving, you can't make them think a pass, and you have to do them thing, and make them go look on theirself. I say people, who the vote for substance, that vote for them, you that, yeah? Can't in none of sense, you know? Me living in a free place, him can't get my, him can't get, him can't get my vote, you know? Him couldn't get my, council where you are do, I come with them foolish talk, you man? Eh? Them plan a mass of country, this a foolishness, so you are a stop, if who not have on a business place out there, I want to hear this. And then you can't get nothing at all, where, where you are do? You are continue support Spanish Town, or you are gonna pull out your business? When you pull out the business and all of them lock down, what, what happened to Spanish Town? Eh? Eh? Them, them still a build more dormitory, and then they, they must say it never build for this and that, widen the road. Who not make the money, who not look on anything and widen the road, them may not have no sense, better? Them not have no, and it, and it happen all over, in a, in a, in municipality, them go round, them mass of people, they are be foolish, they go away. And then people get up and vote for them. People will start vote for them, if you not have no idea, no clear plan, where you can't come out and work with people, it not make no sense. It don't, here where I want the police them do now, listen here.
It has, it has outgrown its usefulness. And therefore, every day trucks for delivery of goods are coming in this town and causing meme.
But-
Trucks them, the trucks are deliver good, so him I say they store them for shut down, you know, only for losing a job. This is where I'm carrying you so, and me listen where them I say, you know, listen, you know?
Mayor of Spanish Town Norman Scott says a law is already in place which governs the delivery of items to business establishments.
Yeah, yeah, a law already in place to govern the item business establishment, yeah, you know, so you want to go drop on the truck them now. Eh, you supposed to protect them, the more trucking, the more money you make. At a municipality, who not making the money? When you sit down there and undo them fire gunshot, they make money, or have a business place them, they not have to pay all the money. Eh? All them make money, without, a empty business place, all them pay them workers, and pay them light bill, and all, 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 all the town run, or the place run. It only not the sense, me not know people vote for them, them people are better, it unbelievable, eh, yeah, yeah.
However, he says there has been a lapse in the enactment of the law, both from the corporation and the police.
And police.
In relation to the matter brought by the deputy mayor, Mr.
See, there's a best dressed chicken truck now, now, you know, best dressed to a lot of thing, they say, you know, see there? Best dressed, you wanna see it, best dressed fish and best dressed chicken, so them have them thing there now, so you carry fish, where, where, where did you carry? Irish potato, I would for carry rice and flour when them sell fish and chicken, eh? You not see them not have no sense, hear this now, hear this.
Scott says the matter will be forwarded to the Infrastructure Committee of the Corporation.
So all the information, relevant information will be added, and so when-
None of them Scott, none of them information are not relevant, it's not. Who not big man, who not nothing, how people vote for who not better? How people, how people vote for them people, yeah man? They were there for hold back country, better, and they might hold back the country, this not make no sense. Them don't make no sense, these are things where we have to highlight, make them watch back themselves, oh, them stupid, yeah? I stop the stupidness, it not make no sense. Eh, yeah, yeah.
We come to infrastructure meeting, we can discuss it and enforce the law, but there is a law.
In the meantime-
Say them are enforce the law, stop them from run.
Time, Mr. Wilson has called for the Superintendent of Police in Charge of Spanish Town to come before the corporation and outline the strategies to tackle the issue. Prince Mo-
He might attack the issue. Police of Spanish Town, if who not go like, who not either, go tackle the issue, yeah? I tell me no- Where I want, sir, where I want? Yeah, man, cool. See, he might attack the issue. Yeah, yeah? You might call police to tackle the issue. Eh? You see me I say? Yeah, but, but hear this now, the town, they never build a way, then you have to have delivery. So you have to make it out a way, and them are cut out a road, make them have a little bypass, so who not buy, them go on, and, and, you understand what I say, um, park? And then, but if you not have delivery, oh, you make money, all the people them work, oh, it bill. Usually I think to me, go, go expand, lick down one part then, everybody can afford it, and widen up the road, and then we bill or do something. See, but if you want to do something, you can't, you cannot do this. We are do, tell the truck them don't come in a once a month, so you are pack down the whole business community now. Oh, the government make money. Oh, they make money. All they make money. You have a license, you have a pay this, plus water bill, light bill, plus the, the, the people them who you employ, government not have a work finer. All they make money. Hmm? That's what I'm telling you, so the country run bad. The country running bad, yeah, man? You see me I say? If you can't provide for the fourteen, they might have fifteen now. Eh? And then they might police, you come and stop the truck them now, for deliver. Which part in a, in a, in a America or, or Canada or UK, you stop truck from do, doing delivery, legal delivery? A matter of fact, police, they more protect them, that them not get robbed. Because them are carry some vast amount of goods, like how police got thief the aisle, where the trucker drive on the back road. Eh? You tell me now, you tell me, if them people, where people them have vote for in a municipality, corporation? In a municipal corporation, if them have sense, this could have be a meeting. I might have come about him, I move motion, and I chat about a crap about go, and I go, you for come once a time, and once a this and that. Eh? Eh? You can't pay back them, if them, by, by theme, theme account, you remember, you know? Them just have a budget, let me make you how much money of the budget. Oh, you think them make up the money for the budget? Eh? You see me I say? Them not have nothing, listen, them have, them have already think, them and them went out, all of them are least, them are selling them, right? And, and you not have even that, them not have nothing, you drive this up, they, it build a way there. But you have wholesale, pantop a wholesale, go right back. So what you have to do, you have to tell them, so one day wholesale, you can't put things in it one day, remember, you know? The amount of truck for coming, you come Monday, extra month come Monday, who, who come Tuesday, and all kind of things, what you do? Eh? You see me I say? Them to go try broaden the thing, I try fix the thing, but you have, you have waste of money with them. You hear say, most of them are drive SUV, them are waste of time. Them local government are not working for the people. See? Say I work for put the people them out a job. Them not have no sense neither. See the man, them, see the man, them a push a budget, yeah? See that? See that?
Where is a focus on productivity? That's a question being asked this afternoon by financial analysts following the tabling of the historic one trillion dollar estimates of expenditure on Tuesday. Details in this report.
The budget tabled in Parliament on Tuesday shows that the government for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins on April one, will be focusing on reducing the country's debt. While that is.
Focusing and reducing the country's debt. But them still want to borrow some more money to help pay back some debt, you know? Put with them, cause the debt are, you are pay like maybe four hundred billion out of the money, yeah? Four hundred billion for the debt, two hundred and enough, four hundred billion out of one trillion, leave six hundred. And then, but, but, but you know, they might get the money. You know, they might get the money.
A good move. Financial analysts are raising questions about productivity. Financial analyst Dennis Young, while noting the seventy-five point three billion allocation for major road and infrastructure projects, argued about the improvement in the country's public.
Alright, people, look on a video there. This a, this a upward going up, right? You know, half a tree this up. You remember when, when Mackenzie, the dead man, did a mass song, the people, they said, they myself, same place they myself, but we not telling about, see, I'm opening it up. You remember, them never have them there, you know? So them say the people, they might block the stall, or block the sidewalk, and I mash them off. You see, when them do, digital building, I give them, I digital them, and then you, you can't, you put more things under it now. As long as you appear, it, it another more problem. So when them did that, tell it was a lie and a fake. All them want the digital, those billion, not them advertisement thing, just to punish, see there? See them there?
Transportation Systems, which is.
You see, you saw them bill? Them did it right now. And you get it for rent, and pay them the money, and that's it. So when you see them, most people are telling about sidewalk, this is half a tree people. See? I just them friend, them just want to let your money go in a pocket, and then build for them things, the advertisement, you have to use it, you can't rub it off. See? And that's it. See? But you have some people, I say, but them a block sidewalk, oh, look on the one, a sidewalk, and the sidewalk, the piece that if you walk. As long as you appear, you're good. You see it? Eh? Me tell you, say, you can't follow them, what the matter about sidewalk, can jump and talk with them? Them just evil when they ready, they mash you up, but if they put a big thing like this in other way, and you pay for it, it's okay. Same sidewalk, it even take up more. You see it, see there?
Next tricky link to productivity.
We're gonna see improvement in the fiscal, we're gonna see some economic growth, I won't, you know? I think once we normalize, we're gonna get back to about one to two percent growth. But we're not going to see the improvement in the day-to-day lives of people because we're not addressing the productivity issues. And, and that is my concern, and that's where we need to go to next, because we're gonna have economy growing, and it's.
Economy not growing, you know, in a, for them, it has a go, but we really check it out, it not a go. Yeah?
It's gonna be limited in terms of who benefits.
As to whether more funds should have been allocated for capital expenditure, Ovel Johnson says the government made the right decision.
Having too much debt where they are an individual or a corporation or a country puts you in a box.
Yeah, there, having too much debt. Say the money, if they never have thief up so much money with debt, it appear of, can I me thief for two hundred billion? And then we appear, can imagine you appear back debt, and you appear like with, with, with debts and, and, and the taxes for it, you have to about, you have to about, um, four hundred billion out of the money, yeah, man? Imagine all those trucks only have two days to make deliveries. So if you make delivery in a two days, right? Um, and, and me have my store, me have a pay people, I pay them, I pay the corporation too. You know, see, I lock down my store, better move and, and lock it down. So the word of people, them in a Spanish town, all them do, they just lock down the store and move it, remove. And then you have a chaos, this and all, cause people have nothing to buy. People have a leave and go at town, and go somewhere far. You understand? And then, and then work, you lose work and everything, the war, war, and this up. Even them are gonna lose money, because them not have no sense. Them do have no sense. Eh? Watcha?
And it's best that you have the kind of flexibility where you can live out of what you earn.
Yeah, them not live out of what you earn. You not earn up, they are tax it. If we not earn it up, people find job, forget it, it better, but you are tax it. You, you know, they might rate, they, 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 they want trillion now.
So that you are ready for the, the external shocks that you are going to get from time to time.
Now, development economist and financial commentator Dr. Chris Stokes says what he wants to see are strategic initiatives to be funded by the budget and how it will spur economic growth.
The biggest part of that is how we're going to finance it, you know, a budget that keeps the.
Yeah, I'm say, oh, we are gonna finance the budget, and that you want, here, you know, remember them can't tell you the budget, you know? We want to know, oh, we have financed the budget, whether they for driving the money, hear this now.
The debt to GDP coming down and that invest in economic growth is what we're looking for. The number itself is a number, but what, you know, what is the consequence of that? Are we getting more into debt, are we, are we doing things to slow down the economy, and?
Yeah, if I get it more into debt, it makes sense, alright, look, hear this.
I, I don't expect to see those things, I'm not worried about the number itself. I am keen on seeing the, the strategic initiatives that this budget funds primarily again are reducing overall debt to GDP and are inspiring, are, are investing for, for, for growth.
Based on revenue estimates, the government expects to rake in eight hundred and eighty-nine billion from taxes.
Yeah, you must run taxes, people. Eight hundred and eighty-nine billion, plus some of the taxes, I don't care, and it, can't have you appear back that, you know, then not nothing else, you know? I hear this again, so we all put a trillion dollar budget. Eight hundred and eighty-nine billion from taxes. So if you got, well, Andy, so if you are wake up that from taxes, oh, you want to stop the truck them from operating in a Spanish town, and there is a place, they might try stop the delivery truck them. They might help pack on the country. There is no way you can stop the delivery truck. I said the road this and the road that, and a man walk, you have to find a way out. You understand, lick down some building, broaden up some more road, and stop, and you DC stop, and do, you have to do something. Eh? Them, them to stop thief the two hundred billion, don't? Eh? Yeah, man? Oh, if we take out the two hundred billion for them? Eh?
And other miscellaneous receipts about.
And other miscellaneous receipt. Eight hundred and eighty-nine billion from taxes and other miscellaneous receipt. Yeah, you know?
Fifteen billion from capital revenue to include the sale of land.
So capital revenue, fifteen billion, sale of land, so them plan, you know, how much land them are sell and everything, you hear? When I hear this? Eh? Fifteen billion.
And the rest of the budget will be financed by grants and loan receipts.
Yeah, you know? The budget, the rest of budget are by grants, the money where them get, for, for grants, you know? For give back the people them, you know? But it run in a them budget. Them put in a them budget to the grants. Our, our, about, some of that we see, we see it. So them take the, the grant money them, what them get, instead of them say boom bam bam bam, put this one side of grant, you know? Yeah? It going in their budget too. Eh? Them man are different, you know, you hear this?
Rashid Mast.
Eh? So, so, so for grant, you know? The rest of money, them might take it for grant, so the grant money, them help it push it in the budget too. The people that never going in the money, to push it in the budget for grant, that are different money. If, if it was, if it, you have, you have some, you have some company and them get some grant, them get to, that not count in the, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a the budget. You not supposed to count on the budget, people. Nah. See? You see me I say? This, this, it, it does, it does hurt, and, and them might do it in a every place, a matter of fact, and next thing with the police, they might do, you know? If, if, if the government don't have, don't have the buses to carry the kids, they might carry the work, the working class, they carry the people them at large, right? Them don't have the buses, them not have the resources, them not have it. Oh, you have to turn to a taxi now, where most of the country, them busting around alike, some might of there, Moby, and some might of there, you know, yeah, most of them darkies, or Saint Andrew. Right? And then they run go certain places, right? So there is a place have a different pantaxi now on them thing there, right? Or is it that you have taxi and a pressure them and a charge them this bag of money, but them they have not make for the day, we not take it off of them? You know, see, we not run the country in a bankruptcy, and you select the taxi man, then pull themselves on the bus service, you lose, you lose million of, of, you, you lose maybe a billion that are there, more than that. More than that. Because maybe if you have a workforce, you know, oh, you make the money. I wonder if you not sit down and think, ah, ah, who will have work, could do, and I tell them, say, you have a good idea, if you rush the taxi people, them and the bus people them. And do them like this, and I talk about law and order. And I say, when I do it, man, when I think about the importance role and the importance of the role we play, and then you deal with it according to. Even on the police, because when I feel like them taxi man a boom bam bam, and you rush them, and I say it work. And I say it work, if them just pull off right now, the government don't have no bus, they not have no school bus, they not have nothing at all, nothing whatsoever. You understand? Them not have nothing, so if you not have nothing like that for service and them thing, that mean them people are taxi, they might do the government. Hey, they might help you, the government, for make money, cause they might carry the workers. They might carry them. Oh, you get, oh, you get for draw them money, then them, them money, they from them, them, go, government, they not, gonna not think. You can't anger them like this. And I joke, I make it, I don't understand what I say, don't it? So you have to break it down, and the police them not realize this neither. And for them, I forget the teacher them, and every teacher have care. And I forget the student them too, I forget the workers them. And the truck them, or what them use, we carry the food them all over, you don't, you know, you know, press things, pam pam pam, deliver, from delivery vehicle, you protect it. I want to get food, you can run in country farm. And I say it go. And I say it go, man. Eh? That's what I say, why the country are mash tongue, you know? Because you have some people, them just vote for a guy, just talk where my talk, and just not jacket, and tie, you vote for him. And him do have no plan, he just come in, and him see something, and then him just hurry, I say, where I get paper? So just come to some danky pool. That they might get paper people. Why the country not move? Because you have people like them, yeah, in a the place, all them do is cut ribbon and make a banana ice, nothing else. You see me I say? No, them, 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 them decrease Western Union by themselves, you know, not we, you know? Alright, let me show you what them do now. Look what them smart now, them have some handful of people, including the, the Chinese, them where, you know, the Lucas camera, them and what have you, right? But them do know, Western Union, you used to me, I tell you this, just in a, in a two thousand, like two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand six, and you could collect ten thousand dollar to Western Union, ten thousand US, no problem, two ID, go check it, if you think I joke me on it. See? Could I send these money, no problem. When they scamming them bus and them go on, the police them, you know, remember, you have some criminal police were involved, and criminal politician from down to the west. Including Member of Parliament and counselor, right across the board, both JP and PMP, counselor. Yeah. So we know, you know, no matter if you say we not know, no, no, mix up bad, mix up bad, one all in a Bible and all kind of thing, so. And I like, we not know, we not know, we know on the two man. Alright. So, so both, right across the board. You understand? So them down there, and them, and them mix up, and then it spread, and then everybody start hear about it. Them start putting more and more red tape, hear what them do now? You now live a foreign, you are send some money for your kids back home, or your grandmother, to take care of pill and them thing, they had with long time. Now, the minister, fine aunt, come up with some little things, because them want to do this and that, them are putting some stiff regulation, them always are come up with some foolishness. So them do now, you are send your money. Them seize your money. But all, them are ask who on the other end, how you get the money from, you still, if them look upon the thing, you know? Them say, you are send to your picnic, them a look on all the name, say if a name gray, you are send back to gray. Boom bam bam, them a say, oh, is a man this, and I send to. And, and, and you see, who, who, you know, say, okay, and some family related this, you know? And you see it all the while, and you look back, and you must have the track, because, because them have to pay taxes, right? So you have to look back and say, okay, this has gone through long time, this is not scamming, this has gone through that, no. They must stop it, oh, him getting money, make him send him, 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 him pay a slip, and make him send where I work, a letter, make him send this, make him send him a, him, 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 um, social security, you mad for them scam you too? Who is Jamaica, yeah, and you, you know, run the world, remember, the US run this. You see me I say? Yeah. So when them, them come with the bag of foolishness, see? And what them might do now, say them might tighten up, and I send back money and a whole money, so what them might do, when them start a US. Your people are flying with them US and want change it. They might tell you, say, oh, you can't change them more than two hundred and fifty. So it's what them do now, them are putting things for even damage the country more, because without the US, remember Jamaica money dead there? It's a reckless case, can't spend nowhere, it can't go eighty, it not have no use, it's that man of all the money, it, it, it not have no use in that at all, none whatsoever. And I like, is a, is a, is a, a Canadian money, or, or the pound, or euro, where you, where you go places and spend, get, them spend, actually spend on US. Their money, they actually go and spend them, them spend. See? You have to about, you have to about, um, you have to about Jamaican dollars now. If you go in a, in a the tiny, in a Yeti, remember? Down there, they not want it, they, they never want it for, for them tissue. You understand? It not have no use. And I see what's thing. So when them do know, that now, them, them are lock down upon that, and them are send back your money, or people are a bill, and them are tell people say, go get your receipt of your things, then where you are buy first and come, or you get a receipt, we don't buy the things. So when them might do now, them are cramped, so them are get less and less money, and this are the government, this is why you think I've sent, doing these things to them own self, so them might help sink the country. Eh? You tell me if them have sense. No, no, I'm gonna send money, I won't have your complaint. My brother didn't send him money, I want me look at me, I have time, I burn out, um, um, one of the bank, and him send about six thousand five, six thousand five hundred pound. And they more on pandem money. Him give him money. And I forget, and say, listen me, boom, no, me, me just get mad, permitting, and just burn them out, and them write, and say, them, them sorry, JM. Send her, and she go there and see them gear it, it have come up to over a million dollar, go and get this, a businessman. Long time, I've been with them for the one, is a six thousand pound, that, that's not money. You see me, I say, came and put money more powerful and all kind of thing, so, yeah. See? So you know, so we, we, we going on to not, not at all. See? And more, the more, I remember, you know, you have the US and thing, and, you know, if, if you have, you remember, you know, a, 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 a thing, then demand you are dealing with, you know? And if you have demand, and you know, you know, say, you are buying the thing, but you not have the money for go buy it and all kind of things, now the bank are use up the reserve, and that I make the money, they value more, can you have the money, you know? See? You know, have the money on them thing, them, the less US them are getting to the country, and them use up the little thing, then you know, say the money swing and go over two hundred. The, oh, you pay like bill, and some people now, I say, they could act on them thing, that's on the corner, they have forgot, can't start, can't slide too. Until place get blackout. You understand, you know, say, I hate it that, man, them not have no sense, you not make no sense, now economists come sit down and tell me otherwise, it don't make no sense. The man in the wilderness know this, remember, you know, me carry economists, you have, you have everything, when me say him, come repeat it, don't it? It's like one, two, three to me, you know, and remember, me not have your calculator, them are gonna know that, like, see? Yeah, man, man, I will listen to this, that's why, you know, we, we, we keep it real, I will say people, you can't make a country run so, just look on them man, that's why me show them man that today, you know? In the councillor, when they not vote back for him, man, when they can't vote for them thing, the man, when, when, when they drench them, you know? Yeah, man, drench them, man, see, before you vote and get a man, and get a man, you're working, oh, man, not make him come telling nothing neither. Make him show you what him doing in your place, you not do nothing, you come out of your face, when a mouse can't find someone, oh, no, no. We not a one sided guy, but somebody where, you know, up full in your community. And being, you know, good, vote for him, yeah, man, put him in and vote for him, just tell him, you know, want a piece of crap, and not in your place, run him away. You understand, you, you know, when I vote for the betterment, I wanna, for the future, and for the kids' future, stop, take the foolishness from them, man, stop it, man. There is no way, I'm gonna tell you now again, me say not even one politician can come and say, loan sum, me to give you this. I'm gonna give you that, I'm gonna give you this, not even one, who much I only can say that? Not all my people them, you know, can't enough of them, not in the foolishness, you know, see, we are talking on the bright and level, eh? You see me, I say? Yeah, because them, when them turn up, and I put up, now, them have in a pocket, so we not have to do what them say. Eh, yeah, man, me not, me not do what people say, cause me not, me not, me not stay that way there, you know, me build, me said self build, say me good, you understand? And me not, me not, not take talk, and me say foolishness, me are about it, country not run good, and uno, uno, uno say when a councillor be a foolishness, when I sit down and do waste of money, waste of time, even the dormitory, we don't want to in our next parish now, get, get, I'm gonna tell you this, me see them just go do something for dead man. Do go far, them go and talk about when man a do good, what could him do? Me have friend, we have two apartment, them have to give up, to get them, them building permit, you know? Same place up in the Saint Andrew, you know, more than one, yeah, man, see, from mayorship. Me tell you, say, we know people, you know, and I joke nothing wrong here, you see me, I say? No joke, nothing wrong here, yeah, you understand, so me is a man now, we just there, we just tell you now, as is. You have to put up, you have to put up a, a guy name, on a thing where save money in a house, have millions, you know, your money just now, us, see? You can just pop out money and do all kind of things, you have put up some guy name, for them, oh, you have to, eh, loan sum, you know that, me know that too, man, see? Um, they put up some guy name, pam, 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 um, your road, for what? What, what it do, it make you know, I've got change your land title. Yeah, it take your time, you know, change your land title, you have got change your driver's license, you know, the name, but you not change it now, you know, because the, the name of the road. You have got change everything now, and let her come in a name where, in a your thing, where you not want in a your thing, why you have to do that? Why for please, who, why? That is agonist, people for run them, my man, that a foolishness. Why me I put my, why me I put your name on my driver's license, put in my pocket, everything, if I'm a credit card, everything now, with your name on it, check, nearly pan your street, you have any street, eh? That not make no sense, eh, then for go, my man, and them think that what them are do, it, and I, and I something for uplift the place, them all go, ah, ah, you know, immortalize themselves. You understand, immortalize themselves, you see me, I say? Yeah, that them I do, you understand, that not make no sense. I put yourself like people, for go call up your name, and say boom boom, say, I've changed up a bag of thing, I spent a bag of money, for why, why? You not make no sense, eh? Yeah, man, yeah, man. No, man, them know, say my advice, though, remember, say, remember, the man in the wilderness, them can't hold him, you know? Cause when them go do some book, they say, hey, we, we self build, but tell me what now, remember, say, remember, hey, remember, no, no, nobody not know, you know? Remember, me known by the club, you know, want, go check it, go check it, if you think I joke, man, eh? Yeah, man, just to come here, do, me, I just the man in the wilderness, but remember, me known by round the globe, nobody not know, no. If me ask who that hate the most, is councillor and minister, me not know them, well, me true, I true, I mean, man in the wilderness, we know some of them name. You understand, but most people not know them, if you ask some of the, even say Dominican Republic, who this, who, who are the, who are the president, who, who are the minister, you not know them. Go check it, but I mean, me, this a loan sum, this a man in the wilderness, anyway, time ago, and go check it. You have some man, when them call me from Africa, they say, Mister Lotham, we want to win with theater, cause he knows I bear music, I bear sit now, bear sit, you know? Yeah, man, see, if you go to South America, what you think, when we go some places, when we go some places, you know, people got for see we, you know, what you think? Eh, me only on the, upon the same height neither, man, but me just school myself, nobody feels me only upon see, that's why me not like some boy, come enough up with me neither, you know? Self built, don't come enough up with me neither, man, we just like easy, come here, the man in the wilderness, don't come enough up on yourself with me neither. See, nobody not know one another, who not know nothing, yeah, man, but free, and yeah, man, I freedom of speech, brother, so we keep it real, see? Yeah, man, we keep it real, man, eh, me I come back with that thing I do, because, I show, I show, I come back with the pant and thing, I show them the something, I'm gonna tell them, say, them can't touch you, what they got. They can't touch it, see, I'm gonna show you the kind of scheme, but we not want a next Kevin Smith, you know, you know, so we soon forward, yeah? But there, later, bless.